All right, I'm gonna call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, April third, two thousand and twenty-three. If you would all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one vision under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is approval of minutes. You should have minutes from our last regular meeting of March twentieth in your packet. Entertaining motion.
Move maybe accepted as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'd like to make the motion to add two items to the agenda. One is referendum results under first item of new business. Any other item President to speak seems to be missing like that just before good and welfare.
Should we do them as separate motions?
I can do them as separate motions or all on so what?
I just wanna do it right. I'm not sure.
Your motion can be whatever it is if it gets a second, it can be discussed.
I'll second it then.
Okay, my motion is to add those two items.
All right, discussion? I do, there's no business for us to conduct regarding the referendum, so that is in an update. I'm not sure what business we would have meaningful before us other than to state the results of said referendum. So.
Jim, where did you want to add the other?
Just before good and welfare, okay, good and welfare, I wanted to add President to speak. Seems like we lost one.
Um, no, it was taken on.
We're taking off.
Yes.
I think just for discussion on the President to speak, for those who have seen the agenda for the School Building Committee, we have this topic on. Also, I don't know if it relates exactly, but based on, based on feedback.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at a town meeting. That's all right. I'm not talking.
All right, sorry about that.
Trying to find a way to make President to speak more effective. Lot of complaints about the fact that President to speak is essentially one way. We don't engage. And so it doesn't really become an effective question and answer for people. They don't, sometimes people want an answer to some. We get it. So I think this is an ongoing conversation about making President to speak or some other tool to make input more effective.
Uh, this, this meeting is a work of the Board of Selectmen. It is a meeting in public, a public meeting. We do offer President to speak. I certainly, it's something I've always supported. I was integral in adding additional opportunities for public to speak, both here and at the Board of Education. I just, it, it is not an effective tool. There are plenty of ways to reach us. And that's my stance on it currently. And the referendum, I don't know that it's a new business. We have no business before us. So I do plan to have that as an update. But.
Okay, I, I have some things I want to discuss and I might wanna make a motion. So.
Again, that's a pretty hefty topic to be discussing with no notice to townspeople. You've been with no notice to townspeople to know that it's something on the agenda if they might wanna see. So I would not be in favor of.
It's a glaring omission. It's, we had a major referendum.
And that's not typical for it to be an item of business. An item of business would mean we have business to conduct. The referendum has come and it has gone. So what item of business we would have to do regarding a past referendum? Well, it's as though we can take action on a referendum that has come and gone.
We have a referendum that has come and gone. And we have a school building committee that was appointed by this board with a charge, right? We can briefly review that charge and, and see where we are with that and make, we can make some kind of determination of an orderly closure of our school building committee.
So once again, that's an item of business not prepared to discuss at this meeting, nor has been proposed. And I, I believe both selectmen know how they could reach out to the office to ask for something to be properly warned. So that's my take on that. All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. You'll have to bear with me as I may. Yeah. All right, the next item is President to speak. If there is anyone online or in the room who would like to speak, state your name for the record, and we ask that you limit your comments to two minutes. Mr. Tullis.
I see nothing remaining on that charge. Work on or any progress with the way the charge is written. So I can suggest that this board seriously consider disbanding this building committee and taking a hard look at how we're going to move forward to improve our schools. Obviously, a school may not be the best acceptable option to those who have to pay. As far as having one or two present to speak on the agenda, I think that the first one is a good one. Things that we all have on our minds when we walk in here. But I think the second one is just as important because it relates back to everything that has been discussed on the agenda. That may bring rise to other additional comments or questions, and I think those are very important to be addressed. Maybe not in this meeting, but in a subsequent.
Thank you. Ms. Berry. Samantha?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll move on. Mr. Tella?
Big cell forty-nine, Myrtle. So my first item was President to speak. Three twenty-three, three-six, two-twenty-one. There was one in the beginning, one in the end. On eight-one-twenty-two, this was something that gave.
Here we go.
You know, Jim had even brought up some kind of, uh, maybe something to do with when meetings would happen. There were some discussions that happened back in August. Like that touched upon, you know, people work different schedules, you know, some people might get out of work and might not be able to meet the first, get here, beat on the first President's seat. They might be able to speak at the bed, uh, at the end. The other is what Ralph actually just touched on was in the first part, somebody can touch upon concerns and a follow-up, they can touch upon things that were talked about. Ethics policy, I hope that there is an ethics policy that comes down the pipeline. I severely caution on a committee, we just saw the SBC turn a blind eye to what journalists and other people in town saw that was a conflict of interest. The lawyer. I don't understand why this lawyer is running Wellington. It's out of control. Everything is a lawyer, lawyer, lawyer. We have three, four, three boards like you run it down, not this lawyer, and everything is pushed through the lawyer. And it's out of control without. The SBC future, I hope it's dissolved. I know this talk maybe a facilities board would be stood up, and I, I think that's a wise idea. I think we need to make sure there's a diverse. Um, there's diversity in this board that is not just being pushed to one, one thing. And that's all I have.
Samantha?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I couldn't get my mic to turn on. Um, Samantha Sperry, seventy-three Lucian Road. I just wanted to comment that I appreciate you guys looking into maybe a better way to engage with the community and possibly have open dialogue back and forth. That's not allowed in public to speak or present to speak rather. But I do agree that I think I personally like having one in the beginning and one in the end, and I think a lot of other people do too because obviously in the beginning, we talk about upcoming concerns, and then at the end, we could speak about what the meeting was about and sometimes it's hard to remember and continue the conversation at a different point in time because it's not always necessarily the same thoughts and the same conversation as having had it that same day. So that's my thought on that. So I hope, and I hope other boards have two present to speaks, and I hope that you guys continue to have two present to speaks. But also maybe in the sideline, look at a way of being able to have an open back and forth. And I know before you had mentioned that you have office hours or you can send emails, but that's one-on-one, which I think is good in some circumstances, but I think I've personally benefited sometimes or gotten different ideas or thought of other things that I wanna say based on what other people have had to say, which I think is important and something to consider. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Yes.
David Coranic, twenty-two, Wellington, Hillbrook. I'd like to know the status of the F three fifty truck that was voted on and what dealership it's coming out of.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Present to speak. Mr. Marshall.
James Marshall, forty-six, Jersey Hill Road. Being personal here. Two things I wanna mention. I know you guys have the Pacific Committee of Facilities Study on your agenda for tonight. I would just caution or request that you be comprehensive in the understanding of what the needs are and how much money you have in that ARPA-funded facility study to actually generate a workable product. Particularly with the number of facilities you're looking to potentially study, and then with multiple years of capital group projects on the schools, that funding realistically is, is gonna be a drop in bucket at forty thousand dollars, really get something that is an actionable work product. That is, you need to do, pay it or further expand, move on at a later date. I might suggest pulling schools out of that and approaching that separately as a project that looks at facilities condition assessment update, as well as a comprehensive picture of how to package those into actual work projects as opposed to just capital group repairs. To that end, the second thing I'd say is like, you know, I think it would be worthwhile if you consider amending, I don't know how that process, but potentially amending the school building charge to properly look at how to move the capital improvement effort forward on all schools, if as, as was the will of the voters on this particular issue. They are the ones that are most positioned most familiar with facility, with both facilities. They are the most established by frankly to deal with the reimbursement process at State, O S C G R. As they've had those conversations, even though the projects will change, it's not a new tool, it's innovations. There will still be projects that need to be built for grant fund, I forget the version from the state. You know, it doesn't really matter too much what you call it, but I think that members of the school building committee have two years worth of experience or more, you know, and have a familiarity with those schools that would be you know, a loss, a lost knowledge, by frankly. Pay for them. So.
That's it for now. Thank you. Anyone else? The room is still glassington.
John Blessings and twenty-nine, Mason Road. Going back to the presence of speak, I'd point out that until the current first select person took office, it was always the habit of this town to have meetings here and people would sit and when a subject came up, they'd raise their hand, get called on, and they would interact with the Board of Selectmen during the board, during the meeting. And this always seemed to work out very well. As it stands now, we have President to speak or we can get up and speak and theoretically, you're not supposed to react. I will say on, on a couple of occasions when I've spoken, I've had someone on the Board of Selectmen react, well, I have to, I have to address what you just said. And then they give their side of the story, and then I've had mine. I don't get the answer anymore. So I'm not really impressed with the current issue, the current way we do things. And I would suggest you go back to the old way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Twenty-one, special six.
Peter Latinjich, ninety-seven, Trask Road. After your last selectman's meeting prior to referendum, I came to President to speak at that time, and I asked that you add to your agenda the matter in which the last town meeting was conducted. Myself and many other townspeople were deeply distressed by the elimination of our public hearing prior to that meeting. And even more concerning was the matter in which that town meeting was conducted. We are, for the past three hundred years, accustomed to conducting our town meetings where the townspeople participate, express their points of view, participate in the decision-making process, and most importantly, vote on what the outcome of that meeting will be as we have for many years. None of these things occurred. I asked this board to explain why it was done differently this time. Why are individual and collective freedoms would be taken away from us? We just said the Pledge of Allegiance. We said liberty and justice for all. That did not occur in this case, and it has nothing to do with the issue of the outcome of the issue. It was larger than that. This is fundamentally how we govern ourselves. We are at what is described in the town meeting form of government, a direct democracy. You are not a council. You're the executive branch, but our legislative body actually determines what the outcome should be. And, and I strongly urge you to at least explain to us why this occurred in this case, because it's the only instance of an I know of in Wellington history. And secondly, urge you to return to our past practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Twenty-one, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I, um, I'm, I'm kind of astonished that there's no item on the board agenda for tonight to talk about the referendum. I mean, seventeen hundred people voted and the proposal failed seventy to thirty percent. And apparently you're not gonna discuss what happened or discuss a way forward. That doesn't make any much sense to me. I think the Board of Selectmen should vote to disband the SBC. The referendum failed because it was too expensive, raised taxes too much, and for too long. The project was so big that it would crowd out meaningful capital spending and other priorities. That's why the project failed. There, there are lots of problems. Other problems, I guess, but the result was a bad proposal that didn't match the overwhelming majority of Wellington voters want, what they wanted. You know, in the future, the starting point, I think, should be you know, what for, for the school building, should be what the Wellington taxpayers can afford and are willing to pay for. And not, not a wish project. You know, and I have to say it, a stacked committees wish project. We had a committee, you know, at nine or ten people or something like that. It swung for the fences and, and did a very, very large project, and it didn't, didn't match up with what the people wanted, I guess. You should be discussing honestly what went wrong and instead of immediately moving forward with a facility study. That path will lead you exactly to where you are now. Now, you should start by setting a budget of what Wellington taxpayers are willing to pay and not doing another, another laundry list of, of what's wrong with our infrastructure. I also suggest that the Board, Board of Selectmen reach out to the public and listen. Display some leadership and some humility and listen to what the public says instead of thinking you already have the answer. Lastly, if you're going to keep the School Building Committee after the current one failed so badly, I suggest adding a bit more balance by reaching out to volunteers so that you get a better result this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I too was dismayed that the results of the referendum weren't on the, on the agenda. I, I I too encourage you to dissolve the, the School Building Committee as soon as possible. It was used as the reason for not fixing the roof because we were, because of the charge of that committee was to look at a new school. Until the charge of that committee has changed to looking at the infrastructure, I don't believe that the state will, will be looking at us favorably to fix some of these long-term problems that it have, have bothered the town for quite some time. And I, I, until we get that committee dissolved, I don't believe we'll be able to move forward with state, state help. So I, I encourage you to dissolve it as soon as possible. Also, the people on that committee were very much looking at a new school, and I think we need to, to refocus the committee, and that may take new personnel. Thank you.
Thank you. There'll be another opportunity to speak later in the meeting. Correspondents, you have no list now. We're working on that. I don't think there's any major, and again, this correspondence is male correspondent that came in to the selectman's office. Update, I have nothing new to report on this. Steve Grant, we're still working on a plan. Troy, correct? We've checked early in the day. Always good to ask. A lot sip grant again, CROG reviewed the seventy-five percent plans. We're still waiting for the next step, which will be to update those plans, submit ninety percent drawings to DOT for review. The ARPA meeting for today was canceled, and the next meeting will be Monday, February, no, April seventeenth at one-thirty. Staff update, I want to formally welcome Colleen Peck to Town Staff. She began today as an assistant in the Human Services Department. She's been a, a long time at least through COVID volunteer with that department. So we thank her for her service and welcome her aboard. I had planned to update you on the referendum. We'll wait till we get to that. And SBC update, Mike.
Thank you. Well, Kate, if anyone didn't hear, there was a referendum recently. The referendum results were a strong message in the know. On the agenda for the SBC coming up this week, which will be the first meeting after the agenda, will be lengthy discussion of the referendum and how we might best learn from the townspeople. What made it so objectionable? I think some of the comments here have hinted at what we're gonna hear was the cost was a major factor. And I'm sure we'll hear some other information. So we'll be discussing that at the meeting, how to best get information from the public on what they did not like about that proposal and what they might like going forward so that we can figure out if there is a path forward for the SBC, if we should be recommending back to the Board of Selectmen changes in the charge or possibly elimination or remaking of the committee. All the things we're hearing discussed here in President to speak, I think will be on the table for or on the floor, actually, would be the right way to say. For discussion in that meeting and we'll also be talking about kind of the status of some of the things that were in the works up to the point of the referendum. And including a financial subcommittee update.
And just point of clarification, any RFPs that were put out on the street prior to the referendum were then canceled. One, we've received responses, but we stopped our process on that, progress on that, correct?
Correct. The OPM, we already had received responses, but made no engagements with anyone. And the design RFP was pulled back and a notice was put up on the publication, the same places it was published, notices were put up explaining why it was pulled.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then I just wanted to add one more comment, although my chairmanship of the School Building Committee is pretty recent. Having been on the committee since the beginning, I will say that I understand the public's concern, but the makeup of the committee is a lot of very thoughtful, caring people who care about Wellington and did what they believed was following the charge. They made a recommendation. The townspeople have spoken. That's how this works. The townspeople told us the recommendation was not acceptable, and the people on that committee, I'm sure will heed that. And if they choose to continue and the committee continues, they will again continue to work for what they believe is right for Wellington.
Thank you. I agree. I have some comments, and I'll probably say for SBC, but the makeup of the committee did not predetermine the outcome. There was a lot of work that went into the makeup of the committee, and everyone had an equal opportunity to apply to be on that committee back when we put it on. So the fact that we don't like the results they came and questioning their service now is a little disheartening. So we'll talk about that at length, that SBC, I'm sure. All right, public works. Troy?
Roots and Rome is still going around town. We installed the water tank. There's, today we officially started sweeping down the road now, so we're doing that from now on, weather permitting. The sweeper is serviced. We fixed up the data cages over here on office building. Pass tools around town. They've been cotton brush. We picked up the voting signs and put up the voting signs out, the referendum. And we did the tragic park.
All right, and in addition, the two very large trees out back here. They fell victim to the Emerald Ash Bore. We saw signs of it last year and
And they fell victim to a chainsaw.
Yeah, yeah, today they came in and took them down. So I appreciate you keeping on top of that. We certainly don't see anyone get hurt. Most of all, our student athletes who use that field. So it was sad to see the shade. It was the only shade out there. But it's do what we can do to keep them safe. So maybe at some point we can talk about planting something in their place. All right, thank you. Anything for Troy? All right, seeing none. Item of new business referendum. So I think we all know the results of the referendum last week. And in my mind, the SBC has a lot of talk to do. And I would hope after that meeting, they would bring something back to this board. I just remind you all that discussing the referendum and taking any action, you know, are two very different things, right? There's no action for us to take regarding the referendum, so I'm not sure what your reasoning was. But in order to move forward with any potential projects, even the roof project and resubmitting that project requires a school building committee. Typically, that stood up mainly of the superintendent and members of the Board of Education. This gives us an opportunity to potentially talk about and, and look at a makeup of the committee to, to be ongoing. I know one of the members of SBC has mentioned some towns have a standing building committee, and that's something that we can take a look at, but that's something that would be needed. So I think we would be moving hastily if we were to just dissolve that without having some conversation as to what needs to be done.
So I'll take a slightly different view on that. I, I, I think the SBC completed their charge as, as defined, and usually when you have projects like this, you usually end things. You put, you put an end to it. I think if you, you are now moving into a capital phase, so there's a there's a whole issue of, of, you know, what do you wanna do with the schools? I mean, usually historically, that's been dealt with a, a Board of Ed function, a Board of Ed, CIP committee, whatever you wanna call it. Doesn't necessarily have to be that way, but it tends to come out of the Board of Ed as a recommendation to, to CIP to move forward from there. So based on what is normal practice everywhere else, I, I think it's best to just do a clean cut on the SBC. And I, I would make a motion that we disband the School Building Committee. I like to do that within thirty days to give a, an orderly transition. There's, there's a lot of.
Are you making a motion?
I'm gonna make a, I'm making a motion.
So your motion is?
Disband the School Build, Building Committee in thirty days.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Assuming thirty days is a reasonable amount of time for you to do an orderly close. I, I think you're gonna be moving into a capital some type of capital decision process. We have CIP. Maybe we want something else. Maybe this is more complex than the CIP. Maybe it wants to be a subcommittee of some sort. Maybe it wants to be some of the members that are on that School Building Committee. Maybe it wants to be a, a different cast of characters. There were people who complained about that they, even though they did a good job, missed the townspeople's, that they, they missed the pulse of the town. So I, I think a, a, a good way to just start is just end it simply. Thank people for their service. They, people put a ton of time in there. I know what it's like to put a ton of time on committees. I've done it myself. We should thank it and, and then move on and pick another committee and move forward. That's the reason why I'm, I'm making my motion to disband.
Thank you.
I'm appreciating that. I have a very different viewpoint on that, and it's not because I wanna spend another night or two nights a month in having meetings. I think it's it's essentially what ends up doing is essentially sabotaging the two years of that. It's essentially what ends up doing is essentially sabotaging the two years of effort. It's. It's basically. Okay, the referendum said, no, let's wash this out of our system as fast as we can, and I think that's. Um, it's sabotage to the work that was done. There is a lot of work that was done that can still carry on into other viewpoints, and there's also a great opportunity right now to seek input from the public. You commented on that, that we missed the mark on what the public uh wanted. That's an excellent point, except I would also point out the SBC spent two years. Seeking input from the public, present to speak twice at a meeting, just as a reference, um, emails, surveys. Six or seven public presentations and all of the input up to the point of the referendum was. A higher percentage in favor. So it was a small sample size granted, but the committee was seeking input from the public and the input they were getting from the public was positive. So the school building committee was working on that, plus a lot of detailed professional analysis of what the factors were, costs, conditions. What the state will do. A major one being the state saying, we don't want to spend money on renovation of schools, especially two schools when you have a small town. We prefer to build new unless you can show renovating the schools is significantly cheaper, so there were a lot of big factors from professionals that went in. And it wasn't just that the school building committee was made up of people who predominantly voted for that particular motion. There was a huge amount of effort into it and there is still a lot of value to what could go forward. It might, it might be remaking it or whatever, but just wiping it out in thirty days is, I think. Maybe of all other things, it's an insult to the two hundred thousand dollars worth of taxpayer money that is tied up in that committee. And to spend, we're at about a hundred and fifty thousand out of that two hundred. That's tied up right now, um, either spent or encumbered. And if we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money and say. Oh, well, we missed the mark, that was a bad idea, see you later and wipe it out, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, some people will say went to nothing. And I think that's the most insulting thing to the taxpayers. So I don't think that there's any reason to disband it, I think it has to get even to its next meeting to discuss what it can do for the town. And how we can best use what's already been invested, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, instead of saying to the taxpayers. Thanks for your money, but we got it wrong, see you later.
I I I agree on a lot of the points you just said there, particularly. It it was a lot of information coming at the townspeople all at once, right at the very end, you started to have. Cost information, you started to have uh uh input from uh our auditors on 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 what type of financing. That that that's appropriate, that we can afford. Uh, we started uh getting our CIP plan and a a getting a a close look at what that. What that looked like, it was all coming at people all at once, and I think people looked at that and said, oh. Uh, you know, that's what they said, stop, put the brakes on, and that's what the referendum ended up being. Um, so, again, I. Thirty days, sixty days, I don't think it should be going to November.
So.
I think this, so that's why I I pick thirty, I mean, I could a friendly amendment, I'm open to a friendly amendment.
If I, if I may, based on that, Jim. There's a reason to let, thank you, let the uh SBC have a discussion. And see what else, the, I I think we need to let them meet, let them have a discussion. Um, gather some thoughts, I think we need to gather some information, I I think it's uh. Uh, we need to act right, not fast, so again, I don't, I. I I let you speak, I don't know. Why anybody voted except me, I know why I voted, so to say that we know what factor seventeen hundred people voted on. Is. A a little bit ludicrous. Uh, it may have been cost for the majority of them, that it's very possible, we, no one ever said it was a an inexpensive project, but. I don't know. What everyone based their decision on, it's clear what some of the people in this room who've been participating through the whole process, I can tell you. I pretty, I have a pretty good strong feeling about how they voted and why they voted. But to say we know all that information and that we're just gonna stop, throw everything out. And we're gonna pick a new cast of characters because we didn't like the answer that this group gave. I I think that's uh, it's insulting to the work.
People said that they did.
That's right.
Agree with what the.
Right, and I don't know that that item is gonna come out of there again, nobody's saying that, but I think we need to let them have. Uh, you know, an opportunity to meet and discuss, you didn't like, it's clear, you didn't like what came out of it. So we have to throw it away and and maybe we can pick some new people, but those people clearly aren't it, because they followed all of their information and came up with a decision. So I I, you know, I I think, I think there's still a little bit of work to do, nothing is happening uh anytime soon, I think they've shown. That they're not working. Uh. Quickly and hastily, they took a lot of time to make a really important decision. And I think we owe them the opportunity um to have some discussion about what direction this project ta- takes. And how the town wants to see it, and and I'd like to hear from them, so.
So we have a motion.
And a second, and I, I think I got that, I'll take this from here. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Karen, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
That's gonna.
No, you, you, so you just call each person?
Vote in favor of the motion.
No.
No.
Motion carries, that does not carry, sorry, motion fails. Alright.
It's gonna suggest from table the motion until we had our first meeting, but, okay.
Alright, I apologize to sit make it into your packet and it's not uh for sharing, it is a draft. Um. RFP for the uh municipal fi- facility study, um, I do not expect us to make any decisions on this tonight. Um, I took a look at multiple RFPs, um, including the last one that was done on the. Um, fire departments, um, and put up information together, there is a a draft outline. Timeline, if you will, it is nearly a draft because we won't have accepted anything, so, um. Uh, out of ARPA came um a request that was originally made to CIP for funding for a facility study. Um, to look at the needs of all of our buildings. Um, and then what what I think we need to decide is whether or not we include the fire departments. Um, that information is valuable, we do have several studies, and I will point out that they are not town facilities. They provide a service and we contract with the fire departments, I think there's some worth to that, um. But, um. We have, you know, we need to decide, so on this list, you have the town office building, the senior center, the library, hall school, center school. And then draft form, um, all three fire departments. So, um, I would ask you each to take a look at it again, because it is an RFP that will go out, we don't want it shared far and wide to keep. Um. Things.
Well, to allow.
Even a contract. That is correct. Um, but to provide some feedback and be prepared, you know, if you can share feedback. Um, on the RFP and we can get a good working RFP to get it out on the street, you know, this would call for. Um, assessing existing conditions of the municipal building systems and components. Their life expectancies, we want to talk about, you know, providing costs to be able to put into. Um, our current plan and I and I didn't put five-year plan, I put our capital improvement plan. Um, I see some CIP folks here, we've talked. Um, at CIP, we've talked at this board, we've talked at multiple other boards about whether or not that should be more than a five-year comprehensive look. Um, and so. Um, take a look at that and see if uh it would identify the needs, um, a timeline phasing. Um, we do have fifty thousand dollars, it's not a ton of money. Um, this is a a field Mr. Marshall works and I know he has concerns um about that. But this is a broader discussion than one, take a look at RFP, let's pass input on the street.
What do you need feedback?
Um, I would say you could give me feedback by, uh. Let's say next Wednesday. Alright, sorry, I have to mute someone here, um. If you can do it by next Wednesday, you get it back to us and then we can, um. I can make those adjustments, we can take a look at that and and see where we go, yes, you can, yes, you can.
Um, just for the public's benefit, um, I know there was, it was not intentional, but you mentioned three fire departments.
Three stations.
Two fire departments.
Three stations, so station thirteen, station two thirteen, I look to Chief Moore and station forty-nine. So two, Wellington, uh, number one has two.
Two stations on Route thirty-two.
Yes. Um, but, uh, again, that's, you know, there's lots of talk about funding for additions, funding for. Um, new firehouses, again, they're not buildings that the town currently owns. Um, and so while we may fund some of those things, I I think. I'd just like some input from you all.
Conversation at least, because it would be public money.
Yes. If we're going to put public money into their buildings, then I think we need to take a look at them in this. But again, we have multiple studies uh on this, but the conditions of each building. Um, have certainly changed since that last study, maybe not the needs, but the conditions, um, and I know uh Chief Moore came to us. Uh, at our last meeting, he spoke at present to speak about the condition of station two, uh, station thirteen. Um. And, you know, that certainly would lead. To some major changes, so you could take a look at this, your feedback, um, hold them in, I can share anything you'd like, um, that we have here on hand. Alright, and we'll have greater discussion about that. I'm sorry for those who are following along that I'm not more specific about what's in it, but we want to keep the integrity of the RFP, so we can put it out onto the street.
Just, just one comment in general about the entire process. Um, I think Mr. Clark raised a very interesting thought. Uh, that you can approach this by looking at it backwards, if you will, and and it takes some kind of, I. Thought or assessment of how much increase in in mill rate the town could afford. And approach it that way, instead of at the very end, how you come through and say, okay, how how much does it affect the bill rate, how much do you want to? Raise the mill rate, so to speak, to to complete some of these capital things, what that will do is end up setting a budget. A capital budget, and then you can work towards, because you're gonna have to prioritize everything, you won't. I'm sure you go through this whole thing, you won't be able to do all of those things on this, on that list.
But no one is anticipating a a project that's gonna fix them all, but I don't see setting a budget for things we have no idea what they are. We need to identify what our needs are and then present that and then work that into a plan within our budget, so to set a mill rate increase. With no knowns, I I'm not sure.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you could approach the problem from two different ways, you can approach it from the ground up, which is do this, hiring. Somebody to, you know, assess our 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 needs and what's going on, I I I think this is a good idea, actually.
Yeah.
Uh, and and you can also approach it from the other direction, which is, okay, how much do we think taxpayers can tolerate in terms of a a mill rate?
And I think some of those conversations.
Or to finance slash board of selection and discussion.
And I think those conversations are going on, we started talking about it in CIP, you'll see it on an uh agenda coming up shortly. Um, every one of these items is gonna come from a different um budgeting world. And I think together we all talk about the impact to our facilities on the town. And I think it's important through this school, this only, the school building referendum was only about the schools. Um, the condition of. Many of our town's facilities, um, is less than ideal, and I don't think the average resident. Um, is aware of that, we keep up with the maintenance as we can, but we certainly don't have. Uh, large coffers to take care of things that need to be, to be done, and I think the mold in this building and in others, um, goes to show that, again. It's not because they're not taken care of, I can't stress that enough. Um, but we have to prioritize with the amount of dollars we have, so I think there are simultaneous conversations, but. I don't say we set a mill rate that we want to go to and that may be completely out of luck with the. The findings of a study, so those conversations can happen at the same time, but I think it's important that we get this. Out, and then I think it's more important that we do something with it. Um, that it doesn't become a study that sits on a shelf, and we wonder why the heck we're here at the table. Twenty years from now, talking about the same things with our hundred and twenty-year-old buildings and ninety-year-old buildings, so. Alright, so if you'll get your feedback to, um, you can send it to Karen. Um, by next Wednesday, and then we'll take a look at this next meeting.
I'm reading correctly.
Alright, tax refunds. I will make a motion to refund Kenneth Andrew a certificate of correction in the amount of thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Second by Mike, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
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 Motion carries. I'll move to refund Hyundai leasing titling trust, a certificate of correction in the amount of six hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
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 Motion carries. And lastly, I will move to refund Nissan Infinity LT LLC, a certificate of correction in the amount of two hundred two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second.
Second by Mike, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
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 Motion carries. Alright, next item is old business, uh, budget update, I'll share uh two things. Um, before, or one thing before we get to the adjusted CIP plan, the Board of Finance and their appropriations. Um, cut a total of sixteen thousand dollars in the selectmen's budget, and that was, um, certainly it's up to us how we, um. How we make that cut within the town uh office building operations budget. Um, but included in there was the one-time project at the senior center that was sixteen thousand dollars. Um, that I feel confident that, um, if we did not move forward with that, would not impact any service. Um, that we're providing now, so it wouldn't hinder any of that, so that's um kind of where they came up with that dollar amount. I I I still think it's a great project, I think it's important, I think there's risk. Um, but again, it wouldn't change a service available to anyone specifically our seniors. Um, and the uh next item is a suggested uh. Change to the CIP plan that came out of a CIP meeting last Thursday. Thursday, um, so, uh. This is Milosis here, she's the CIP chair, I'll let you speak to it. Yeah, we can't get that, that stopped working, the selectmen need to have a copy here, so.
All we did at the meeting really was make one. Uh, liner thing, that is actually a pretty major one, which is. And we had already been talking about potentially doing this, no matter what happened with with the referendum. And that would be to add a million dollars into the reserve fund. It would, if the referendum had passed, it would have been saved so that we could offset some of the bond payments in the later years in the plan. Um, now that it didn't pass, it could be used to do some of the projects that we need to do at the school. So, schools, um, um. So the idea would be to put a million dollars in, um, in each of the five years, and that's it. It's the start, and as we know, what we're really just voting on with the budget. For this year is is what's in the in year one, so that year one, twenty dollars. Um, maybe by this time next year, we'd have some other thoughts about how much should be put into that. Fund or be spent or. Uh, um, we, who knows what what we're gonna end up with in the plan, um, maybe we need two million dollars next year. Or maybe we bond and we need one point one million dollars for a bond payment or or something like that, um. I can't predict how it'll go, but at least we'll have some, um. Uh, placeholders in there, um, as a proxy of what it could look like, so.
And it looks like you're doing that in file number four?
Excuse me.
Uh, file four, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, it's on, yeah, in the second line down. Yeah, so, um, like Christina said, what it did is removed everything that was specifically for a bond payment. A note or bond payment, and um what it did was increase year one, which falls within the selectmen's budget. From two hundred thousand to a million dollars, so just so that we're aware that eight hundred thousand dollars, if we take action tonight. Um, would make our one-year percentage change about twenty-seven, just over twenty-seven percent. Um, so, um, this was something that was discussed at the Board of Finance the night they were making appropriations. I kind of asked them to pause because I had concerns of where the money would go, how it could be used, and that it wasn't part of a plan. And that who could then draw from those dollars? Um, and how that process would play out, and so that prompted the CIP meeting to discuss, and it was, um, I believe it was unanimous vote. Of of the committee, and and I I made the motion, so I'm familiar with it, and my reasoning behind that motion was. That the money be used for SBC or via a school project, so that either of those, depending on what the outcome of. The discussions at the school building committee could then go through a process of, um. Allocating those funds, and that process being, it would need to go from either of those boards, Board of Education. For the schools or the SBC, depending on movement there, um, to. Um, to the Board of Finance. Who would then come to the Board of Selectment, ask to call a town meeting, and then to a town meeting. Um, or a potential referendum if we were talking about a larger sum of money and bonding. And so that was uh the thought process there. And so. You, you know, we're really late in the budget process. So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we, um. Approve the amended CIP plan. Um, for twenty uh twenty four through twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Second for discussion. So, um, a-again, this is not, um. It is not included in the budget that's being presented tomorrow night. This money was not in there. There were two hundred thousand dollars was. So if this board decides to move forward with this plan, then at the budget hearing tomorrow, I would simply make a presentation. Um, and and ask of the Board of Finance to consider. And then people at the budget hearing could participate in that conversation, and they could discuss it based on what the Board of Finance hears in that. In that hearing, decide whether or not they want to make an additional. Um, appropriation, because they would need to amend their appropriation, correct? So, um, just because CIP voted, just because we vote today, that all that does is allow it to move forward. Um, to possibly be added to the budget that will go to referendum. So, um, again. Oftentimes in this, uh, this discussion came out of the Board of Finance, and then, you know, a couple of them sit on CIP. So I hope they'll all remember if this passes and the Board of Finance, based on that public feedback. Chooses to make this change, that next year when they're looking at our budget, they. Um, you know, we didn't put necessarily put forth a an operating budget that in uh consisted of a twenty seven point. I am roughly seven, five increase, uh, but that was a result of um preparing for some much needed. Facility investment.
So what's the, if we were to move forward with this, what's the net impact on our?
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
On our budget?
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, what? Touch under two mils, right?
Well, they, it depends on what they're doing. I don't know if they'll make any other adjustments or changes if they increase to, um. Right, the mill rate, it's, I think of Peter when we had this discussion, the chicken and the egg, what comes first, the budget or the mill rate? Sometimes we spend too much time putting them together. Um, but if they're utilizing funds from the general fund, that could adjust whether. What, what the mill rate does.
Yeah, I just wondered just.
On its own, it's about a two mil, uh, it's just under a two mil. Increase on its own.
I think based on discussions that have already been going on between the Board of Finance and all that, the way the budget looks like it's playing out this year. That wouldn't actually be the net impact.
No.
The, the net impact would be much less because the budget is coming out, even the current fiscal year is coming out favorable. Which allows us to go favorable into the coming fiscal year. Um, revenue is more than expected, expenses are running a little lower, so there's a, there's a gap that opened a little bit in there. So this is one of the years that it's easier to find. Money adjustments. As compared to some of the, we've both chaired the Board of Finance. Um, there are years where it's very hard to find. A way to keep from raising taxes. And you're cutting and cutting, cutting this year, it it's running in the more favorable direction. So this would be a year that would be easier. To put this in as opposed to who knows what next year will be. Maybe next year it won't be as easy. So if the money comes in now. It will be in play. If we wait until next year, it might not, you know.
We had a lot of favorables, um, this budget year, which um I'm thankful for. I'm sure our Board of Finances, cuz, cuz. Um, a lot of our friends and neighbors and neighbor in towns are not seeing increases. I think the last number I saw before this um investment is added. Had us about overall town and uh both educations, about two point seven percent increase. So, um. Can I just throw them out?
Well.
Um, so, uh, for those on the line, it was, I wasn't talking about any random citizens. Um, so I, I think, you know, those things played in our favor. There are lots of favorables to the Board of Education that helped us. Our friends in Stafford passed a six point three out of their Bu-Board of Finance, I mean, I'm sorry, Board of Education. We're, you know. Yes. And, um, so there are a lot of favorables there. I think it would be, um. A much greater impact moving forward, but on its, on its face, just those eight hundred thousand. And remember, we struggled with adding eight hundred, I wanted to add eight hundred thousand to our budget. For road improvements, we know we need. This money is specifically going for schools in one way or the other. Um, and, uh, you know, if it were the SBC, they certainly don't need a million dollars. I think we, you know, just saw that. But they would have to go through multiple steps. Public approval to be able to access those funds. And if that board becomes no more than, than it. The SBC or art goes away. So.
I think the other thing that's benefiting our budget situation this year is, as we all know, we had some hiccups in our assessor's office for a while. And there's been incredibly hard work by the new team in the assessor's office to. Get the grand list accurate and get it updated, and plus we added a major property to.
Correct.
The grand list. So all of those factors are in our favor this year.
Right, so I, I, I think it's a great idea that you did, I, I'd like your comments you made at, at your meeting. Uh, at least putting money aside in the reserve. To give you a little breathing room to develop a more thoughtful plan. I, I think that was the right way to proceed. I think you, I think you did a good job. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, which was to approve the adjusted plan. Um, any further discussion?
No.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll ask, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you very much.
Good stuff.
And so, yes, thank you all. Especially, thank, thank you for hearing me out during the Board of Finance meeting, when I had great pause about just adding something that went to no one specifically.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the impact, the actual impact year over year of the town and schools budget. Is a tenth of what it will look like, it's two point seven. Increase. So, you know, when you were talking about the, the impact of moving. Uh, that's, that makes it look like twenty seven.
Well, because it goes into the selectmen's budget. Yes.
But I just wanted to clarify whatever.
Thank you. All right, ethics policy.
Did you say two point seven mils or?
No, two point seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Ethics policy.
Check, and that's okay.
Um, back, uh, beginning of February, I presented a draft, um. Policy to this board. Um, I've heard no feedback, um, specifically from either of you. So I'm looking for, uh. Your input as to how we proceed.
Um. I think I've mentioned, I'm in favor of a policy. I'm just, I'm hung up on the commission. Uh, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I, I do think ethics policy is needed. Uh, every place I've worked had an ethics policy. It's required. All extensive chain training everybody has to go through. So I, I, I think it's very important to have one, um. Just haven't gotten my head around up. How we manage that with a board or not, I, I'm kind of.
And without that, who?
I'm leaning against that.
Who, who, uh, who oversees it? Who, who, who do we answer to? I think, you know, we heard folks come to us and say, who answers to this without, you know, the authority? Um, and and I think what I presented is very clear and not an elected official, right? So the policy is okay to everyone except that person that's implementing it. So who implements it? Um, if not a, a commission, so, um, I'd ask you to. Uh, you know, provide some, some feedback so that we can have some healthy discussion about what other options there are.
I'm, I'm in the exact same place that Jim is because, um. I think one of the values, and this goes to the conversation about present to speak and making it more effective, is one of the things that we've heard a lot, like in SBC. And some on the Board of Selectmen is complaints about questioning ethics and. There's no official way to resolve ethics complaints in present to speak. It's just not the right place for it. So if we can do something good with a policy, we can also provide a very clear avenue for people to pursue those complaints. And for where they would bring those complaints. So I, I think it's really important, but I do wrestle with the committee, because everywhere I've worked has also had. Um, one, but people who work there have been told you're on this committee, and they were probably selected for a reason. You know, maybe they, it was thought that they would make good decisions, or maybe they were in trouble with the boss at the time. I don't know. But. Got appointed when they weren't at a meeting, right? But people were picked and told you're gonna be on it, and and it's a little harder in the public. Especially where you have a town where half the people know each other.
So I'm, you know, up for your suggestions, but we're kind of at a, you know, a crossroads, or we're not making any movement, cuz I presented a draft, and we've had no discussion about it. Um, so I think it, it's something we need to discuss, and I'll, you know, keep saying, this is not the first time it's been brought up. At the Wellington Board of Selectmen, because our energy savings, um, but. And and each time it comes down to, no, we don't want that because of the oversight part of it. So if we don't, I think if we don't solve the oversight portion, um, what is, you know? So. Provide some feedback, please. Okay. All right. I'll continue to put this on there. Um, I, I'm eager to move forward, but. Not just make. All right, next item, emergency communication policy, um, Mike. You shared.
Yeah, so I apologize, um, to the board for not getting it out sooner. I pulled it together, um, for the weekend, and then. Other things happened on the weekend, and I didn't get it out to you.
You know.
So I did send, um, so you, each of you has a copy of some sample information relative to it. Uh, there's everything from other towns like City of New Haven. Um, through some of the information that was pulled together during the, the committee's work, the uh, committee. They pulled together and made the decision, um, for the recommendation, I should say. Um, two years ago, and, uh, so some of this is refresher information from that committee. And, um, so you have that to look at, and I also emailed this afternoon a twelve page document that I didn't feel like printing. That is, um, from the state of Connecticut, and it has sample, um, procedures and policies, um. Guided by the State of Connecticut Emergency Management. Way more complicated than what we need, but there are pieces we can cherry pick out of it that are relevant to what we're doing. And what it really comes down to is a lot simpler than all these pages. It really comes down to. Reaffirming that we want two levels of communication. One is emergency, the other is administrative.
Right.
And allowing the townspeople, it would be full, um, manual opt-in, opt-out. And, um. We would need to clarify some details of that, like after a certain period of time, if there would be a clean out of the. The system, because people opt in and then maybe move out of town or get a new cell phone number or whatever. And you end up with a lot of traffic in the system that's not relevant after a certain period of time. Some communities do a washout every three years, say. They put out a whole bunch of messages over the course of like three months saying. If you want to stay in the system, you have to re-activate your number within this period of time, or you'll be washed out. So we need to, we need to kind of finalize the details of that. But the basic principle is really pretty simple. Uh, and it's what we've already been talking about, is manual opt-in, manual opt-out, two levels of messages. And the only thing that would be automated, that people would not manually. That people would have, not even know about Wellington's emergency communication system, but might get a message. Would be if there is some sort of major emergency, that it's determined. Anyone in the area should get notified, like a violent incident or something. You can do a geo fence. So you send out a message and it, and the cell phone system allows in that type of message. To grab any cell phone that's in that area, even if those people have never been here before. If you're driving through. If you were driving through Texas next week and they use that system and they do a geo fence around and say. There's an active shooter right where you're driving through. They can send a geo fence message to every single cell phone, in which case you would not have any idea who they are. And they wouldn't know who you are, but they would send a message to your phone.
I thought when we had some of those discussions, and correct me if I'm wrong, cuz we met with Code Red and Everbridge, made a note with Everbridge. And I thought one of them said it was if you, you utilize that system somewhere else. So I in Wellington sign up for it. I go to North Carolina and they use a similar. Okay.
Yeah.
And it's different from, so many of us may have, um, signed into the state's Everbridge system. It's, it's different than that. You have to sign in for this one, just like you did that one. So, um. You know, it only works as well as those.
But it's a different system.
Yep.
Yes, even though it's Everbridge, it's a different.
You get to say, yes, I want to get those alerts, and no, I don't. So when, when this, uh, when we first started talking about this, it was making sure that it didn't become like spam. So that people don't respond to it, so that, you know. Um, look, I think it's really important when our Girl Scouts are selling Girl Scout cookies, everyone in here probably feels the same way. But do we use that system for things like that? Probably not. Um, do we use it to say, you know, we're getting four feet of snow, so the transfer station is gonna be closed, because. By golly, when it's Saturday and I go to the transfer station, that's the day we go. So those kinds of things are important. And then what we do and what we don't, um, within the community, I think, um, is probably gonna be our most challenging. And, and who handles it.
Right.
Um.
And the only other.
Talent and Mansfield both have a policy. I swore they shared them with us during.
All our stuff from that meeting and I can't.
Cuz I know I read them at some point, but they weren't in any of those emails.
I went through them all.
Okay, Karen, just I was losing my mind searching for them.
The only other topic that we should address at some point, and we don't have to address it upfront. We could, but. A lot of communities have a website also that is. In a relationship with the messaging. So. When they send out a message that says, uh, you know. A su- a severe weather event or a tornado is approaching. Let's, let's just use the tornado example. A tornado is approaching the north end of Wellington. Go to alert.willingtonct.gov for more information. And. On there, there could be more information that wouldn't fit in a text message.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, there could be a picture of the radar, or there could be the National Weather Service warning or whatever. That takes a little more system behind it to drive that. But it is, it's. It's capable, the system's capable of doing that, to drive someone, and we could do that easily, but it just requires us to set it up, so that if. Whoever our authorized initiators are, when they send that information, they have to send it. They have to make sure it goes to the correct places, and you'll see in the information I gave you, some of those talk about the first step is select the method the message will be transmitted. And if it's an administrative message, it might just be by text. If it's a major safety event, it might be text and the website. See, click, click, and then send the message.
And ability, has, yeah, uh, ability to link with our social media if you so choose.
Yes, that's another example of the same thing.
And you sign up for what you want. You prefer phone calls? You prefer email? I prefer text?
Yes.
You can choose. So, and we do know that it is up and running, is working. We've tested it on staff, cuz you can have different levels. So we have just a staff one. And, um, one for the, the outside. So now we're getting ready for everyone else, and so it's, it's good to go and, and working. Um, all right, so.
That's it.
We'll take a look, so.
Provide feedback, please.
And reach out to, um.
Tom and Mans.
Talon and Mansfield.
Yeah.
Right, Mansfield uses Code Red, but the policy is the system, uh, the same regardless of the, the usage. Okay, thank you. All right, present to speak. Is there anyone present to speak? State your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes, Mr. Tella.
Uh, earlier, slightly, uh, the idea of working on dialogue between board and, and the people in a town. Quickly on the emergency thing, I think you're gonna turn some people off. If you start throwing up weather stuff, tornado, active shooter, stick to that. And I think that would be the, the wise, cuz if you start adding other stuff in, people are just gonna turn it off. Um. We've got outside, I meant to bring this up last time. I don't know how we are. And if that situation ever came here, from the town standpoint, uh, I don't, I don't know.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Uh, the.
Railroad.
The rail, okay, the railroad thing, yeah.
Never brought it up. How are we prepared in town from a town standpoint to handle that? Um. Town Ethics Committee, uh, I believe if you're gonna set up a committee. Equal, not Republicans, Democrats, I have caution, unaffiliated, because I'm unaffiliated. You guys know where I lean. A lot of people unaffiliated and they need much way. So if they're gonna be unaffiliated on a committee, they should identify which side they, they would be on. Um. Accountability to the board members that went around putting, uh, papers on the mailboxes. Uh, I talked to the post office, they said it was totally illegal to be done, and there were board members doing that. And for the town not to take action, I think would be extremely inappropriate. Uh. Ash trees being affected, brought up. Uh, I don't know how people can contact the town, like what procedures for people. Have ash trees that are along the roadside that may impact the power lines that maybe ever source doesn't do. But the town may be open to, to helping those residents out. I don't know if there's a line for those people to go through. Um. Hundred fifty thousand dollars, you brought it up earlier. To me, that hundred fifty thousand dollars went to a new building. It went to the lawyers. It went to Collier. It went to Colliers that was investing in designs, environmental impacts, deeds, it was all focused pretty much, I would. Assume seventy-five percent of that money went towards a new building project. So that money's a waste anyways at this point. Just wanna touch upon that. And then. What's the notification, RFP can't be relea- released, and if it can't. Sure that these are saved for record, so. The town people can go back and look at the drafts later on, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka. Peter.
Oh, sorry, I just got a message that I'm dying, my battery's dyke.
How quickly? You muted yourself. You muted yourself.
Am I back?
Yes.
Okay. Two points, one, I'm I'm the million dollars as as a member of the Board of Finance, I'm a little distressed that it's going only for schools. The town's got a myriad of problems, I think that million dollars would start towards a lot of problems other than just schools. We have fire departments, we have roads, we have other issues. And and the schools aren't our only issue, that's one, and. Mike, I love you, but the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the town voted against the second hundred thousand dollars one time. I think that should have been a message to not be spending it, thank you.
Thank you. Sir Tullis.
Last Friday's meeting. I got the news about. A fall to Kuzco Road. And I just wanted to let this for now prepare that it was indeed annual Kuzco. They turned a hundred years old in summer. Following morning, his wife of seventy-seven years was taken to Johnson. We stopped him to see her today, she's doing very well. And. Been welfare since we can't speak.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a clarifying question about that, did did Mr. Kuzco pass away? Yes, he did. Okay, I wasn't sure, I thought so, but I wasn't sure. Uh, yeah, I know what the call was. Thank you.
Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I I just wanna comment that recommending changes in direction is not insulting to anybody. It's just making recommendations so we get better results. You know, anyway. Just substantive issues, because the Board of Selectmen has not provided any leadership tonight, SBC will move forward with no reform. No new members. And no new new direction from the Board of Selectmen. In my experience, usually when the same group of managers tries to change direction. It doesn't work out too well. But I guess we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak for a minute about the emergency notification system. What comes to my mind. Was the incident about two years ago, the young man with the machete. I did not hear about it through any. Formal channels, I heard about it through word of mouth. Somebody heard about it at church and they passed it on. I also heard, and this may not be true. I also heard that the state police did not want it puddle sized. And I think that's a real problem. Not much scares me, I actually got very scared about this. Cuz I didn't know where he was hiding with the machete. If the state police can keep. A serious notification from being published. That I think we need to think about that. We need to either work. We need to think about it, figure out how to deal with it.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak, Mr. Marshall?
I'm sure you'll have your own review of comments, but I suggest, I know the set dollar limit. But I would suggest you define a scope of work. And a level of detail, if you want these assessments. And let respondents provide fees if they feel are appropriate for that level of work. You know, built by bucket, I'm sure there's gonna be description, be trolling, you potentially wanna have assess. You can have them potentially break down your videos by. Fuckers and villains, probably had a little better words that. When you realize. I really captured.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is Tricavannick.
David Gray. Twenty-two Wilmington, I got a couple of things. I think the SBC. Committee. Did a pony and horse show. They told us what they wanted to tell us, they weren't. Out front with everything. And then again, one of your reasons why your. Referendum went the way it did. And the other thing I wanna mention is that. For you people that probably don't remember, the firehouse on thirty-two, which is Station thirteen, was not built by town money. It was built by federal loans, same thing with the fire truck, because we had an escalable in the fire burn. We got all we wanted then. So I gotta say.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lieutenant Six.
Peter Wiltendridge, ninety-seven Truss Road. I want to thank the chair of the CIP for attending tonight and sharing with us what sounded like a very thoughtful. More importantly, practical plan. To fund school improvements, and I look forward to learning more about it. With respect to the discussion I heard tonight, following. The motion to dissolve the school building committee. I I wanna urge the majority. On this board, just pause and think a little bit about what I've heard. One of the strongest issues in my experience, both as a town's person and a member of the school building committee, was just the deep distrust. That was expressed by the townspeople. Throughout this process. Yet, what I heard tonight was immediately we need more experts. More studies. Direction of a project based on what the SBC members think, of which I'm one. Think more about what the townspeople think. And message you heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good and well there. Mobile Food Share will be at the Town Office Building next Wednesday, April twelfth, from eleven to eleven thirty, it's open to all. Continue to support our small businesses and restaurants. Wellington Day is Saturday, May twenty-seventh at River Road Athletic Center Complex, sorry. Melissa McKinnon is chair. I can reach out to her to sign up. The same day, May twenty-seventh, is the PTA Fun Run. Look for details on that tomorrow, April fourth at seven PM at the. Town Hall, or some refer the Old Town Hall, will be the annual budget hearing. And the annual town meeting will be two weeks after on May, April eighteenth, the both at seven PM. They're both in-person only meetings. And then the budget referendum will be Tuesday, May second, here, the Town Office Building. The annual. Joe Green Egg Hunt. Will be this Saturday, April eighth. Twelve o'clock sharp. Till twelve o'clock sharp.
And the siren.
Come a little bit earlier, but if you wanna get the eggs, I'll be there before twelve PM, that's for sure, cuz they go.
Twelve and at twelve oh three, the eggs.
I think twelve oh three is generous, maybe the preschool eggs are still there. These kids are serious about their egg hunting. This Wednesday begins Passover, and this Sunday is Easter Sunday, so I want to wish a happy Passover, a happy Easter to all who celebrate those. And it's seven fifty-one. I think we we all agree on the same one, wish good luck to Yukon Men's Basketball as they take on San Diego State. Tonight in the national championship, nine twenty tip-off, so you don't have to go home, but you should be watching the game. So. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-two.
Second.
That's non-debatable matter, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you.